Good to go, over there on the IT side. Okay, looks like we got the all okay signal. We'll bring this meeting to order of the Loma Linda City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Jindal?
Present.
He's here, because we can see him.
He's, he's, he's here.
Can you hear me?
Now.
Hey.
Okay.
Present.
Councilman Leonard?
Here.
Councilman Rigsby?
Here.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Here.
Mayor Duper?
Present.
Thank you.
We didn't have any closed session today. We will start off with the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Jindal.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To God, we pray that we make the right decision today. This will be the last meeting we have before our election. We pray that we have the courage, the fortitude, to get through these tough times that we are going through currently, and that we are able to serve our community in the best way possible. Amen.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to delete item number five, please. SBCTA would like to revise the agreement.
Okay, removing item number five off the consent calendar. Is there anyone in the virtual, online public forum that would like to speak on any non-agendized item? I'm looking over at our IT gods, and I see them not saying anything, so we will move on to our first scheduled item of business, which is the consent calendar.
I would like to pull item seven B.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, item number seven. You want to just try to address that real quick, and then we can do the entire calendar?
No, Jarb, if you can just describe that for me a little better.
Yes, sir.
I understand, Foundation for Art in Public Places, I'm supportive of it. Where and how soon?
Yes, you remember-
And how much?
Couple months ago, you, you awarded a contract to fabricate the art.
Right.
And so now, we're ready to install the, the foundation, which is similar to what we did on Barton Road. It'd be three on Barton Road.
Barton?
Barton Road, between-
Three more on Barton Road?
Yes, between Anderson and Benton.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, on the-
On the south side.
South side.
Yes.
Okay, no, those are nice.
And then, and then maybe one more at the entrance to the Hodor Crooks Park.
Oh, okay, okay. No, I'm on board, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Okay.
Oh, number 12?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious how we're appropriating the 302,000 in the CARES Act funding.
Yes, if you look on the, yes. We receive a 302,000, close to 33,000 dollar CARE, CARE Act funding from the County of San Bernardino. We receive similar amount from the state. And for, for this one, 33,000, of which, if you look at item number 12, 18,000 to go to public health, which is, we're gonna install the glass petition at the counter for the planning and public works counter. And-
Could you just-
Yes, sir.
Glass, that sounds permanent. Because most companies are putting Plexiglas in-
Right.
So they can remove it when we have a vaccination.
Well, we, we, we feel that we want to protect the staff. We could have some opening, we have left some opening, but be permanent at some location, yes.
Okay.
Are we protecting from angry public, or from virus-laden public?
It might be more of a security thing than it is a-
No, no.
That's what I was saying.
Finance it is, but, but not, not in public works. And then, $2,000 for a computer, laptop. $1,500 for PPE. And the remaining 281,000 is for the public safety, like police and fire, that qualify for, for this grant. Between the two of them, between the state and, and the county, we should take care of our deficit.
Fire seems to get, where's fire, there's fire. Fire seems to get money every time we turn around, you guys are getting more money.
And we use it, can be useful, police officer.
Must be incredible.
It never stacks up, they always spend it because it's a fire hazard.
They're still waiting on that ladder truck, because Dr. Rigsby gets to drive it first.
Yeah, yeah, he'll be in the parade.
I get to drive the back. I, my, I'll forget it.
Okay, with those questions asked and answered, does anybody want to move the consent calendar? Moving. A first, and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar, with the exception of item number five. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving along to new business, we will hold a joint public hearing with the Housing Authority. We'll go ahead and open the Housing Authority now, for item number 14.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, before we start, you have an update in front of you, an updated page two of the agreement. Came up with a couple of negotiating changes at the last minute. The acquisition statement down under 1.1 is to seller on, says on or prior to the date of agreement. And then the price got reduced to a million 225. Did a little bit of, actually not as a Mary Erickson group, did a little bit of horse trading on the property. So this is to purchase a four-unit building, actually, they advertised it for sale as a five-unit building on 112464 San Mateo. Currently, we have about a million three in the housing fund. Every year, the, we get state money, and money comes in to add to that housing fund money. The state requires that our surplus, which is that million three, be kept under a million dollars, so that people don't award that, that it gets spent appropriately for housing functions. If we fail to do that, then there are repercussions where the state would enforce low-income housing in, in undeveloped areas, it would have an impact on our general plan and our housing element. So we want to get that spent down to below one million dollars. And like I said, every year, additional funds come in. So what this, this project allows us to do is to purchase a fourplex. Like I said, it was advertised as a five. It had some serious issues with code enforcement, building, planning, and fire. So when they get done, it will be back to a fourplex for what it's permitted for. We'll end up with four units, three two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom unit. We'll have two low and two very low-income units. And because of the way the, the payment mechanism and the, the weighting for that is, the project is treated as a very low project, which gives us additional credits on the very low side, which are the hard ones to get. Like I said, there's been some issues with that property. Mary Erickson, they're the same organization that built the houses on Juanita Street. We'll be purchasing this and managing and operating it. We will be essentially on paper joint partners, and then after 30 years, landlords will, they'll be paying us residual rents 30 years from now. The, the purchase price is a million 225. 975,000 comes from the Housing Authority. And then the remainder of that, there's one lot left over on Juanita Street that they were unable to find funding to build that last house. Will be sold at market rates and then fund back to complete this. What this also does, it depletes the surplus down significantly below the 1 million threshold, so we don't have to do this every couple of years. And it'll give us time then to build up the, the housing fund for the future. So staff would recommend that you approve the, the agreement. Any questions?
Are we, are we taking it so low that in case we needed any, any money in there for anything, we're gonna be, we're gonna need to worry about that, or no?
Typically, these projects are so expensive, that this, I, you know, spending, spending a million two for a four unit is expensive enough. For anything of substance, it's, it's in the multis of millions. And we're such a small city that the state doesn't let us build up enough for that. So essentially, we'd come through grants and tax credit sales. One of the unique things that we are in is we have, on Poplar Street, behind the senior apartments that are there now, that was only phase one of three or four phases, so it's only about 25% built out. We have entitled projects. So the county has, has money coming up this coming year for additional projects. The money typically goes towards entitled projects. As what we've managed to do with both the Poplar Street ones, is when other projects in other cities fall out and they're unable to perform, we have shovel-ready projects that we get the money for. So we'll continue to hold that as entitled, and when there is money for a large project, we'll use that. So this, drawing this down makes sense for us at this point.
Okay.
And we have a good working relationship with Dina, with the county, so we're doing good.
For not only the multitude of viewers that are watching, but for me, can you kind of cut that down to regular English and not political? I mean, because what I just heard is we're buying a place that's kind of dumpy. And I'm not sure what the fifth bullet means, a four-unit project with three two-BR and one three-BR units. It's a four-unit project with three two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom units. Three two-bedroom units and one three-bedroom unit. What shape is it in? You don't want to live there. Okay, and that's, that's, that's the impression that I had. I had to, I had to listen carefully to seek that out, but that was the impression I had. We have multiple issues with code enforcement, fire, building, and planning there. Okay. So you don't want to live there. So these guys are gonna buy this thing, fix it up, put it into someplace that normal people would want to live, and then turn this around and fill our low-income housing demand in the city. Where are we at with low-income housing requirements for Loma Linda? The new Reno numbers came out, we are assessing that, but it looks like we are not even in the ballpark right now.
We're not in the ballpark?
Probably not.
Just remember, we were at 100, 120% compliance.
We were overbuilt-
Yeah.
Up until the new Reno numbers came out from the state. They shoved, now I'm gonna get political. Anyway, our numbers went up dramatically, and so we have some ground to make up. In the next 12 months, 16 months, you'll see a new housing element come before you that will address that. And how do communities like Bel Air and Santa Monica deal with this?
They thumb their nose at the state.
Well, actually, Santa Monica and San Pedro are perfect examples. They are completely built out. So they don't- So there's no room for low-income housing? There's no room for low-income, therefore, they don't have to build them. Their whole, the low-income requirement is a couple hundred. Ours is a couple thousand. By our, as it sits now, and the, the numbers are rough, okay?
Yeah.
But were we to completely comply with state requirements and build out all the low income that's required, not just zone for it and have it available, somewhere between 20 and 25% of the city would be low-income.
Currently? Based on what the state-
It's already low-income, they, they don't make any money at all, they're students.
Based on what the state wants.
Based, based upon what the state wants. Were, were we to follow everything the state wanted and actually build out, not just- There's a difference in Reno, there's building and zoning, okay? And zoning is what we comply to, you have to have the ability to build. So through that, we can work with the zoning. But were we to actually build out everything that the state would like to see built, 20 to 25% of the residences in Loma Linda would be low-income.
Yeah, I would, I would like to help explain this a little bit.
Take your ma, I'm 12 feet from you, so, yeah.
Okay. When we had a redevelopment agency, under the redevelopment agency law, we've met our low and very low requirements.
Right, right.
We never met our moderate-income requirements, because moderate income is market rate typically in this area. So nobody's going to encumber a property at market rates. I mean, it's just kind of, it's kind of a ridiculous-
Market rate is moderate for the inlet empire.
Yeah, so you can't encumber a property with market rate requirements. It's like, so what if, what if moderate rate was above market rate? Then you'd force them to sign a contract saying they will overcharge everybody who's moderate income. It's, it's an absurdity, okay? So, we caught up with that, and then they got rid of the redevelopment agency, and that requirement kind of fell by the wayside, partly because Jerry Brown, quote, "didn't believe in low-income housing," so the whole thing fell away. And then Reno comes along, and they've always, Reno has always said-
What is Reno?
It's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RHNA, and they pronounce it Rena. Rena means you have to, you have to plan for the building, but not actually build it. So they basically say you have to zone, and, and they define low-income housing as zoning 25 units.
20 to the acre.
20 to the acre. So, so it's basically multifamily apartments that you have to zone for. And they say you need 3,000, so you have to zone 150 acres, or whatever it comes out to be, at that rate, in order to meet the housing requirement. So Reno does not require we ever built a single affordable housing thing. But they start juicing up everything and giving, requiring us to put density bonuses on these things if they have affordable housing. So, so developers start salivating over building affordable housing, because there's so many bonuses and it's more profitable than regular stuff. And then you'll start seeing building of affordable housing. But until then, all we have to do is zone for it. But, you know, we don't have that much property left, and we're gonna have to start looking. Do we have 150 acres that we can zone at 20? Or do we need to zone one acre with a, you know, a 100-story building? That, that does the whole thing? You know, so we, we have to, we have to figure out how to do it, and that's what you're gonna be up against.
That's what we're doing in the next 12 to 16 months through the housing element. So, so is there going, are, are- Is there gonna be a presentation of a long-term strategic plan to meet the state requirements? That is what the housing element is. It's six inches of long-term strategic plan. Well, I- Yes. The, the- Be required to update it every 10 years. Because what this sounds like to me, and I'm a pretty average citizen, is that we're, we're, we have found a dumpy apartment building that we're gonna pull together so that it will help us meet the state requirement. You nailed it. I wish I was as concise as you were.
And so that we can spend down our surplus, so they don't-
What's that?
And so we can spend down our surplus below a million dollars. So we're, we're accomplishing two things.
So they don't force us to build more. Where is this again? San Mateo, 11264. What, go up where? If you go south on San Mateo, where it ends, it kind of makes a tight knuckle. It's a little in on the corner there. When you drive by, you'll see it. Yeah, no, I, San Juan is where I used to live, but, yeah, right next to it, yeah. Wow.
Okay.
What are the alternatives? What, what are the consequences if we vote this down? We will continue, we will have the surplus at some point. We will come up on the state's radar. Then they will somehow encumber us. And our attorney probably can answer that more clearly. I don't know what that means, encumber us. They will force us-
Force us to do something we don't want to do.
To build low-income, they'll say, look, you have vacant land in Area D. Congratulations, that gets to be low-income rather than market rate. Because I've been on the city council for 10 years now. We've been dealing with this low-income housing issue all 10 years. And we will for, for the rest of our lives, it's California. That we've been dealing with it long before you got here, and we'll be dealing with it long after all of us are gone. Yeah. Well, that's encouraging.
And when Jerry Brown got rid of the redevelopment agency, we lost all of our credit for having already built low-income houses.
Well.
And I didn't vote for him.
You know I've got about 30 multiple comebacks, but I'm not, I'm gonna pass on it. So what you're basically telling us is this is what we need to do that's in the best interest of the city. It, it, it's like taking your medicine, hold your nose, swallow the pill. It's like what? It's like taking your medicine, hold the nose, swallow the pill, and move on down the road. Well, I'm married to a pediatrician, and her solution to all my ailments is Pedialyte. There.
Or wrapping it in peanut butter?
And you know what it tastes like, there you go.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing. I see a line forming. No, not really. Anybody online? Nobody online, nobody's jumping at a chance to speak. Close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Before I make a motion, and I'm willing to, but what are the multiple units we put up, multiple, multi-level units on? I'm trying to remember on the south side. Poplar Street. Poplar. Yes. Will we bring those up, these up to that level? We will, those were brand-new units. We will bring them up to a nice level, I can't guarantee brand-new unit level. Yeah. But they, they will be remodeled and rehacked. Because those have actually turned out to be pretty good. I mean, I've driven, I make a point to drive by there from time to time. And, and they've held up pretty well, as best I can tell. That's, their management is very good. Actually, Mary Erickson, the ones that are building these, have, have a couple of small projects in the city, kind of like this. I think it's an eight-unit and a 10-unit, one on Cole Street, that they manage and maintain to that same caliber. It's a good, when it comes to the long-term maintenance, they're a good organization. Because if they can do that, I'm good to go. Yes. So I'll move it, based on the fact it'll be the same management- Yes. Company, okay.
Yeah, they're pretty highly regarded.
So did you move the staff recommendation?
What's that?
Did you move item A and item B, or just item A?
Dusty's always got the details. They're one and the same, right? It's just who's approving it.
Yeah, one's the Housing Authority and one's the city council.
So I will move both and look to the city attorney. How much detail do you need? I'm gonna approve or move 14 A and B. Do you need, need me to read that?
Well, the clerk has been very good at reading that.
Okay. Clean up. Okay. Okay, so Barbara will take care of me again. I move 14 A and B.
And I'm second to you.
Okay. We have a first and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill Number R-2020-03, approving an affordable housing agreement by and between the authority and Mary Erickson Community Housing, a nonprofit corporation, as well as Council Bill Number R-2020-36, consenting to the approval by the Loma Linda Housing Authority of an affordable housing agreement by and between the authority and Mary Erickson Community Housing, a nonprofit corporation. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Approved.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Moving back to the council agenda, we have reports of council members, and we have a, an item to discuss related to school district boundaries.
Mayor, this is probably not something that is a report. More, more of it is, there's a request from residents of Oakwood Drive to have a school district boundary changed, but I think we need to, we need to delve into this a little more and find out more detail of how something would be done. So I'd like to bring this back either in November, December.
So you'd like to bring it back for further discussion?
Yes, at our next meeting on November 10.
It, it, it is agendized, technically, it's just maybe in the wrong category, but did you want to discuss it tonight, or no?
What I did-
I think part of the conversation is, at least from my part, I am not confident I understand what the process is, and when, when I had spoken with our city manager and assistant city manager, I think we wanted the city attorney to look at this and make sure that we were interpreting the-
Yeah, so what I did is I did ask the city attorney to review the booklet, the School District Reorganization booklet, so, Mr. City Attorney, can you go over the process for me very fast?
Yes, I, I did review that, and unfortunately, I left it on my desk tonight.
Here.
But it, it does, I, I recall basically what, what it is. The, there is a process where the city council of an affected city may initiate a review of school district realignment to transfer areas from one district to another. And we do that by a simple majority vote of the council. That goes on to the county education committee, and they would do a preliminary review and recommendation. If that passes, then it would go to a formal public hearing process, and notice would be given to various parties and affected persons. There are some situations where, depending upon the size of the transfer, it can be done without an election, and in other cases, you have to go through a formal vote of those who would be affected. So it's, it's a fairly lengthy process, I could, we, we have a, kind of a flowchart that shows how that would all work. If you'd like to review that, we can provide a copy to everybody. But it, it's not really agendized for any action tonight beyond discussion. So it would be appropriate to schedule it for a future meeting if there's a consensus to go ahead to study that and possibly take action to submit a petition to the county.
I have a question. Is LAFCO in charge of this, or is it just the educational authorities?
It's, it's not LAFCO, although they do get notice.
Yes, I did, I did call, the answer is no, I did call Sam.
Yeah.
I forget his last name, but he's a director for LAFCO, and he said, no, it's going to the county.
It's the school boards and the county election committee, they, they do give notice to LAFCO, and I suppose they could weigh in their staff, but ultimately, it would go to an election.
Does it?
And here's the, here's the flowchart, you can see it's fairly complicated and various steps. It's not a simple matter.
It's not on yours?
We don't have a copy of it.
Yeah. So it would be-
But technically, it's not within your jurisdiction to make that decision. You can only initiate the process by a petition.
So it, so it goes to an election of the involved populace?
Yes.
And does, does the receiving or donating school district have any say in the matter?
Yes, both school boards.
They have to agree, and then it goes to an election?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the kiss of death.
My, just curious, is this for moving, I'm assuming this is moving into our district? Or is it the, is that, is, I'm not sure what, what district that's in right now.
You see, that's, that's my question. What is the impetus behind this?
Let, let Councilman Jindal explain.
So we have a section of our city that is split off from the Redlands Unified Wood District, and we have that- District, and we have that relatively new community, which is west of Oakwood Drive, that is part of the Colton School District. The wishes of some residents there, and that's why I'm saying we probably wanted this later, to make sure that everyone in that area is in agreement. But the wishes are that they would like to be part of the Redlands Unified School District, and the reason I thought it would be wise to bring it up with the city council is because as our city attorney just explained, we are able to initiate the process, but before we take any action, I want to reiterate that we should probably confirm whether every single resident there, or at least the vast majority of them, want to engage with this.
So if I can just clarify, Councilman Gendol, there are some people that would like to move their children into the Redlands School District, and that's the impetus?
That is correct.
And, and, and why is that? What's, what's the point?
Maybe they have a perception that one school district is more desirable than the other.
Yeah, but I haven't talked with any of them, so.
Yeah, they, they approached Mr. Gendol over it, but it's the, is it your brother or your brother-in-law lives over there? I can't remember.
My sister-in-law and brother-in-law live in that neighborhood.
And there's roughly, what, fifty houses there?
Something like that.
And that's the only part of the city, but that's in Colton.
Well, it's not just that. It's also properties down University Avenue.
Down to where?
Yeah, when I, when I was on, at Yardley and University, I was in the Colton School District.
Oh.
So it's, it extends down University Avenue. So it's like the far western tip of the city, and it's just kind of an unusual split.
Yeah. So just, my understanding of the background with some of that in, in, talking with the city manager prior to the meeting tonight, is yes, both school districts would have to agree, and there's some other things involved. For example, like Redlands School District charges a bond measure, which would get attached to your property taxes and some things like that. So potentially, that could raise property taxes for those folks if they did move. And so that's probably why I'm guaranteeing it's got to go to a vote.
But surprisingly, the taxes for the Colton School District are higher than for the Redlands School District.
I'm sufficiently confused, so what is the action required tonight?
I will bring it back in November.
Yeah, it sounds like there's not a whole lot we can do either way, other than we could ask or make a recommendation that the county start looking into this, and then maybe put it onto whatever county agency is responsible. It's probably Ted Alejandro's office superintendent, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not required that you take any other action to initiate the process, other than to vote to forward a petition to the county.
Mr. Gendol, is that okay? We bring it back? Is that what you're looking for?
Right, so we can't do anything today about it anyways. So that's why I'm proposing to bring it back in November, on November 10.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports of council members?
I have a question. Speaking of interagency confusion and so forth, it made me think of our most recent hot-button issue of Scotch Lane and Colton down there. Is there any update on any of that, or what's the status of that right now?
Conrad, did you, have you?
Anything new on?
I can tell you, I think it's heavily, heavily entrenched in their council.
The letter you requested has been sent off to LAFCO, and they are in receipt of it. So should anything proceed, we'll be, we'll be aware of it. As far as their process, it is deeply, deeply in their planning department. Typically, I'm going to hurt my arm patting myself on the back, but you guys are spoiled because our planning process runs six to, you know, six to nine months. We did all of Area D in less than six months. These processes in other cities typically run for a year to a year and a half, sometimes as long as three years. So it probably won't be out of their planning department for, I'm guessing, a year by the time they get all, everything done, and then whatever other review processes they have.
But the residents of Scotch Lane and that neighborhood understand where the, whose court the ball is in?
I, I can't say what they understand, but we've made it clear that, that we've done what we can and are willing to act when the time comes, but it needs to work its way through the proper process and the proper venue.
Okay, good.
But Scotch Lane has nothing to do with what's happening in Colton.
Is what?
Scotch Lane has nothing to do with what's happening in Colton. Scotch Lane is south of the property that's under Colton's review.
You've totally confused me now, because I thought that was our out, is that we had no control over what they were requesting because they were in a Colton district.
We sent a letter basically saying we wanted to be notified if anything changed with that project, and we also, part of that letter said we were not interested in losing Scotch Lane, to affirm what Dr. Rigsby had done originally. So we're, we've taken that position with LAFCO, so we're just waiting now.
So it, well, it's, publicly, it is dormant, and it probably will be for well over a year. And then at some point, when Colton's planning process is done with all their environmental studies, then it'll come up for review in the Colton venue.
Makes sense.
And they're in the middle of election there for that, that Colton district seat for their city council, so we'll see. That's playing quite, quite heavily into their process. Okay, so any-
I have an item to-
Yes.
-bring up. I've had several, I don't have a number, but several people who have talked with me about the, I guess because I'm on the OmniTrans board, and I'm going to talk with OmniTrans as well, but the bus stop in front of the Dollar Store at Barton and Mountain View usually has-
Redlands Boulevard.
Redlands Boulevard, I'm sorry. Usually has trash all over the place. So the last two, three days I've driven by there deliberately, and they're absolutely right. It's a total mess. So I'm going to talk with OmniTrans, but I want the city to be aware of it as well, because it's, it's a kind of a disaster.
We should ask the state to ban trash.
What's that?
We should ask the state to ban trash.
Yeah.
I have to say, on the heels of that, I have not noticed near the amount of problems with, with the transient encampments around town as there used to be. So kudos to whatever the city and the sheriff's department and fire have been doing lately, because I got to say, it's been, it's been a lot different, so. Anyway.
I recently, this morning, was in our illustrious state chapel, and I had some- Oops, I had some family members that were thinking of buying a condo there, and they said, hey, come take a look at this. So, fine. So we go, and we look through all these condos and all, and I was thinking, why'd they approve this? Why'd they approve that? And I started thinking about our planning commission, how they do such a good job, that they would have never approved half the, some of the stuff that I saw. I just wanted to give a shout out to our planning commission, because I know they work hard, and just seeing the difference in some of the projects up there versus what we do down here, I just want to give a shout out, because I think they do a really good job.
Okay, any reports of officers? No. Okay, that closes the city council agenda. Since we already have the housing authority open, let's move on to the housing authority agenda. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any, any member of the public wishing to speak? Jump up now, wave your arms. Seeing none, we dispensed with the scheduled items under G, and we have the consent calendar. We have a motion, and a second. Madam Clerk?
Okay, the motion is to approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda. Councilman Gendol?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that dispenses with the housing authority, and we'll move on to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Don't see any. The only thing we have is a consent calendar. Have a first? Second. First and a second, Madam Clerk?
The motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency agenda. Councilman Gendol?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our meeting for this evening.